It's 6:30, so I will call this meeting to order. Can you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Carol Lamos.
Here.
Lee Sharps.
Here.
Casey Barney.
Here.
Tasha Singer-Silvingham.
Present.
And Fran Newton, all here. Okay, do we have, before we start, any public comments on the agenda?
Fifty to Friday.
Hearing none, we'll go to the approval of the minutes. We have Monday, June 5th. Are there any comments, corrections? I just found one on page three, line four. It says the Ashland Economic Commission, it should be committee. Anything else?
Yep.
No.
Are there comments?
Well, under Memorial Park, it was $1,950, not $950.
Thank you, Susan.
Line eight, what was it again?
Line three.
$1,950.
Not $950.
Yeah.
Line three.
I thought it was awfully cheap. Okay, hearing nothing else, do I have a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the Wednesday, June 7th minutes, that was our work session for the goal setting.
The Primex meeting?
The Primex meeting.
I don't see anything.
Yes?
I think it would be, line 33, page one, might sound clearer if it was Shibilingham opposed rather than voted nay.
Okay. You got that, Wendy?
Only thing I can say, do we make sure we have all those present listed? Have everybody?
Oh, no, there was a member of the public that was there also.
She was there briefly, yeah.
Yeah, that was the only member, was one member of the public. So this is everybody that was there, just so that the citizen remains.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, hearing nothing else, is there a motion to approve or amended?
So moved.
Any second?
I'll second.
Any further comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, okay. Okay. Consent agenda. So we have signatures for the general fund manifest, the amount of $164,540, and the payroll manifest of $12,533. I will pass these down. I think most of the signatures have already been put in, but there's a couple missing.
I'll start.
We also have a land use tax form that I think most of us have signed. We also have a personnel action form, a couple of them. One is for reimbursement of expenses for Walter Durack, and one is for reimbursement for attendance at a meeting by Charles Smith. So if you could sign those, I'll pass that along.
I have two others.
Okay.
The town clerk who opened the board could sign the warrant for unlicensed dogs.
Okay, can you explain that a little more?
These are residents who have dogs that are registered with the town that have not paid the fee.
Okay.
And it gives the authority to contact them.
Okay, pass that along.
You missed this.
And what else, Charlie?
I have the letter written to the Ashland trustees of the trust funds for partial payment of the Mango Security Fire Alarm System that we're going to install in the town office building.
Okay.
Presently, they only asked for half of the amount.
Okay.
So that's all I asked for the letter, so we would have another one of these coming later.
And that's something we've already approved, so we can just sign that?
Yeah, yeah. They also, Mango also sent the proposal, so I don't know if you want to sign all of this or vote to have me sign on behalf of the board.
I'd like to move that you sign it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
There's a lot to sign there.
Yeah, please do. I guess that's it. We don't have any department head reports? Apparently not.
Well, I have one little one.
Okay.
DPW director told me that the chip ceiling on North Ashland Road is going to start early, next Wednesday and Thursday.
Okay, wonderful. How long will that take, do you know?
He didn't say, I don't know.
Tim? Okay, how long will the chip ceiling on North Ashland Road take?
I believe they said two days.
Okay.
Wednesday and Thursday.
Okay.
Weather permitting.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, project list.
Okay. I'm still waiting to hear back from NHDOT about scheduling a scope of work meeting. I actually provided a follow-up meeting, or email, to NHDOT about that today. I contacted Hoyland-Tanner about options to reduce the cost for the Thompson Street project.
Okay.
Another, I think I need a decision from the board on whether or not we want to apply for funding through New Hampshire's revolving fund. Our deadline is June 30th.
Oh, that's coming up.
Yeah.
Can you tell us something about the terms or?
I don't have all the specifics, but I do know, as was the case last year, you sort of have to get in line.
Yeah.
Because once the funding's determined, they kind of go down the list after town meeting.
And we did apply for that last year.
No.
No, we did not. Is there a better interest rate?
It's better interest, could be a better interest, in loan forgiveness. But it only applies to water and sewer.
Okay.
And that's where I'm confused a little bit, because, you know, obviously if you tear up the road to get there, and I'm not sure if that covers.
Is that something we have to apply for, or water and sewer? I mean, it's one bond, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We would apply.
Uh-huh.
We have some time, we can maybe meet again to determine before if we want to apply.
You said June 30th?
Yeah.
It's the 19th, we don't have a lot of time.
Yeah.
Anybody have a comment or a thought on this? Yes?
Yeah, I'm concerned, we knew about this last year, but we haven't received any information for it this year. So it's kind of, I mean, it's a rough position to be put in, to have no information.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, unable to review the information prior to a vote.
But you can always turn it down, I assume.
Yeah.
If you, you know, if you apply and you don't like the terms,
you don't have to accept them.
But to get in line might be wise, in case it's something we really want to do.
Yeah, I think we should get in line.
Do I have a motion to?
I mean, I can say, I just barely got the reminder email.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, send us the information.
I did talk to them before, and they told me that it was pretty much for the water and sewer aspect of it.
Yeah.
I didn't really hear back from DES about this till I got the email.
I'll make that.
But I have information that I can send you.
Okay, well, that would be good.
I'll make that motion for to allow Charlie to sign us up for the revolving state fund.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I abstain.
So to maybe ease your concerns a little bit, it's just an application.
Yeah.
It's all contingent upon the article passing.
Right.
You know, and you don't have to accept it.
Right, it's just another option for us to consider.
That's all you're pretty much signing up for.
Okay, great, thank you, Charlie.
Okay. Nothing new on GISN, the goal set in session we had with Primex. So the public knows, Primex is supposed to provide us a report in coming weeks about our meeting. The Scott Heath Mill building, it's pretty much placed on hold by NHDES.
Brown's Field, again, Charlie?
No, you're kidding me!
Under description.
It's Brown Field!
Under description!
Okay, sorry.
You'll get it.
Sorry, I know I'm a pain, I know I'm a pain, it's okay. I used to be a tech editor, I can't help it.
Duly noted, duly noted.
It's getting better, though.
Yeah, it is.
I know it's Brown Field.
Okay.
All right, so two updates on this one. NHDES has the scope of work from Novus. It's kind of on the back burner with them. We sent out the letter for the boiler house. I recommended to LRPC, you know, DES had wait 30 days, let's wait 30 days, and take it from there.
Okay.
I did follow up with PSU about students' ability to help on projects. I haven't heard anything back.
Okay, thank you for that.
Nice.
Town hall fire alarm system, we just signed the contract. The Norm DeWolfe Day and Volunteer Recognition.
Yes, I think we need to form a committee ASAP to, you know, scope out what we're going to do and how we're going to do it and when we're going to do it. I know we have a date, but it might not be on a weekend, and probably the best day to do this. We can still call that date, is, Harold, I'm sorry, is it the 30th or the 20th?
30th.
The 30th, thank you. We can call that day Norm DeWolfe Volunteer Day, but in order to do the work of people coming out, it might be better on a weekend. But I would like to ask for volunteers to serve on a committee to kind of scope that out and figure out how we're going to recognize that day as well as our volunteers. Have any volunteers besides me that'd be happy to do it?
I'll join you.
Okay. Anyone in the public who wants to join, certainly those people who love Norm the way we did, we'd welcome your participation. And if you just send me a note, I will try to organize a meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
Lake Region Planning Commission, the culvert, we, they have completed the initial stage of the GPS on the culvert locations.
Okay.
But that project's been pushed back till late summer.
Okay. How many culverts do we have, do you know?
Tim?
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 How many? Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that precise number.
I think they, we had a meeting with them. Tim, what, they didn't even find some.
There was a lot that they didn't even have on the map.
Okay.
They did is drive around.
Yeah.
And I pretty much know every drain above this. Wanted to run out, but they didn't have on it, so they had to go back and they have to go drive around again.
Okay.
Find them.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
But our meeting with them, I mean, I don't know if you can provide any other comments with that, Tim. I thought it's pretty exciting, we had to like peek what we're supposed to get for.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to help us out a lot.
That's wonderful.
Future means.
Did they discuss the paving plan as well?
This was just about the culvert.
Just the culverts, okay.
Yeah, but the paving plan a little, they showed us an example
Okay.
of how they break down each road, and then they put cost assigned.
They had the counters out, the traffic counters.
Okay.
That was part of that paving plan.
Okay.
So we'll, I don't know when we have another meeting scheduled soon, I think.
Well, that's, that's great, thank you.
Yeah, let's move right along.
Excellent, glad to hear that.
I have an update on the town telecommunications.
Okay.
So I followed back up with First Light, which used to be Bayring. Bayring is the proprietor of the town phones. And I followed up about the previous 22% discount they offered to us. And they countered that with a proposal to run fiber optic line from the pole to the town office building.
Oh.
Apparently, they were the company that ran the line to the school building. So I still have to do a little bit more analysis to it, you know, maybe a cost-benefit analysis.
Yeah, yeah.
But it would increase our speeds, our upload speeds.
Nice.
It will handle the VoIP over internet phone problem we have and being on the cloud.
Wonderful. Are you still having issues with the phones at the town hall?
Yeah.
Okay, feels like I'm talking to somebody on a cellphone half the time where you lose the signal.
But when I talked to CCS, Certified Computers, who handles our IT, they said, pretty much go for it.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to hearing more information. Okay.
The Wimpo House, we approved the installation of electric outlets. We'll have time, and I think that's about all that I have.
Okay. Any other comments on the project list, or any additions?
No.
No, okay. New business, is there any new business?
I guess I can speak about the NHDRA.
Okay.
No means no provision now instead of afterwards. So, DRA did reply back to our inquiry about what, where do we sort of stand when we have the no means no provision in regards to, in our case, Warren Article II with Thompson Street versus being agents to expend on a capital reserve fund.
Yeah.
Of course, the law, RSA 32:10, says that, you know, if the town votes down the appropriation, we can't spend any money. But as agents to expend, we do, they granted us that authority.
Okay.
They didn't really give me a clear-cut answer. They said that they're not, they have no authority over expenditures, but, you know, that the intent of the voters must be considered.
Okay.
And that the Budget Committee has the authority to review the expenditures.
Okay.
And if it's pretty much considered in violation of that expenditure, it could go to Superior Court.
You mean if we expended money that they didn't approve them?
Yeah, out of the CRO.
Okay.
So.
So we have some more studying to do.
I would say, in my opinion, no, I would just no means no.
Just no means no.
You know, go to Article next year.
Okay, yes, Tasha Singer.
I would recommend that we consider turning this over to the Budget Committee for an advisory review and consideration of possibilities.
Well, you and Harold are certainly welcome to bring that to their attention at your next meeting.
And I'd like to make a motion that the Budget Committee liaison have, you know, be authorized to speak with the Budget Committee around an advisory review and input regarding this.
Can I be asked to be specific advise on what in particular?
We haven't planned any expenses.
Right, right, yeah. Okay, so let me explain. Here it says that the Budget Committee has a specific authority to review expenditures. And so what I was thinking is, since the DRA gave us a rather vague answer, if we go to the Budget Committee and ask them for an advisory review, at least we can have an understanding of what their perspective.
What their thinking is in advance.
Right.
Yeah, I don't see any issue with that.
So I'd like to make that motion, then that that be brought to the attention of the Budget Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, just let us know what they say.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, there's one more item that's related to this, which was, we had a, we had an RSA 91A request to furnish a list of properties in the town of Ashland that have town culverts and that drain directly onto the properties with buildings and houses on them. And we had no such list, yet it seems to me that our decision-making process has been in part based on the idea that if we fix one property, that we'd have to, you know, do something for all similar properties. So I think it would be helpful to substantiate that decision if we had a list. So I'd like to move that the DPW director creates such a list, a list that lists all properties in the town of Ashland that have town culverts that drain directly onto properties with buildings or houses on the lot.
Is that something you can provide, Tim?
Well, it's kind of what we're doing.
Kind of what you're doing, yes. Well, when you complete your analysis of your culverts, will you be able to provide that list?
Um, yeah, that list will be in the town office where it'll have every culvert and section of property.
Okay.
I mean, I'm.
That's what LRPC is supposed to provide to us.
Okay.
It's kind of what we're doing, we're in the middle of doing.
Okay, all right, so we will honor that request as soon as we get the information.
I mean, we can't create, we can't do a 91A, from what Charlie told me, for create something that we don't have.
No, absolutely, absolutely. But if, you know, as soon as we get the information, which we're already collecting, then, then if you can provide that, we'll be happy. Thank you, Tim. Anything else, Tasha Singer?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any other new business? Okay, select board items. We have a couple of citizen inquiries, and I'm going to start with the Ashland Water and Sewer Inquiry. And I will read the letter.
Point of order, ma'am.
Yes?
Based on the fact that the SWAT process has not been completed at this juncture, any and all information being shared at this point would be pure conjunction and speculation. Why is this matter being brought to us this time? The SWAT is a work in progress, no document exists until we vote upon it and approve it. We were brainstorming, us, we, the people here, and the department heads, were in an environment to brainstorm for the weaknesses, strengths, opportunities, and threats to this town. Therefore, no information was fabricated, generated, or handed out at that time until voted on by this board. And secondly, this is a board commission coming before you, not a citizen. Let me ask the board, how do you feel, what do you feel is the responsibility of a liaison? What should they facilitate? Do you feel that this is a liaison matter at this time? I do. Point of order, this is a liaison matter, by all means, please bring this up with your liaison.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
As the liaison to Water and Sewer, I'd like to say that I concur with that. I believe that this is a liaison matter. And as liaison, I also feel that there is good reason to have, and we really need to have, a meeting with the commissioners to discuss issue, an issue pertaining to water and sewer pursuant to RSA 91A:3, a Roman numeral 2, subsection C, which reads, "Matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board, unless such person requests an open meeting, this exemption shall extend to include any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of a fee, fine or other levy if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant. Therefore, I move the following, that the Board of Selectmen hold a meeting to discuss issues pertaining to the Water and Sewer Commission, and that pursuant to RSA 91A:3, Roman numeral 2, section C, this meeting be a non-public session unless the Water and Sewer Commission requests an open meeting."
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion. First of all, the only individual mentioned in this letter is a member of the Board of Selectmen, so that does not apply. Secondly, the statement was made in public, rather, it wasn't written down, may not have been written down and codified yet, but it was made in public in front of several people. Those comments have also been made outside of that meeting. I've gotten feedback from a number of people. And I think it behooves us as a town, who are overseeing our assets and especially our town reputation, that we discuss this in public to clear up any potential misconceptions. Now, we have the Water and Sewer Commissioners here, we have engineers from Novus, and I think this is an ideal time to at least clarify and make sure that everybody understands what the real information is, instead of rumors. We have committed ourselves as a board to not propagate rumors. And therefore, we have some information that we need to share to dispel any possible rumors and concerns that are out there. And they're out there, I've heard them from multiple sources. So I think that we should continue with this process.
Madam Chair, for the public, could you please state under our current Select Board handbook, under item J, number one, your relationship to the person complained and done the paperwork in front of you?
I have, I can certainly state that. My husband, David Toth, is Chair of the Water and Sewer Commission.
Okay.
However, the water and sewer is a town asset.
Yes.
I am Chair of the Select Board, and partially, our responsibility is overseeing the town assets. And so I have nothing personally to gain, nor does David Toth have anything personally to gain from this discussion. It is a town asset that is of enormous value. And our town reputation is of enormous value. As we're trying to build that reputation and get businesses to move in, we cannot afford to have these kinds of rumors damage that. So I will object to that comment.
I have two more things, and then I'll let you run with this. Could you please perpetuate if I was incorrect in the minutes of those present on our June 7th meeting? And also, as to why my agenda, which was picked up after the timeframe of which agendas are supposed to be done? Why on my agenda there is no Water and Sewer Commission complaint? And under item J, number one, how that does not convolute you in that scenario?
The agenda was originally printed on Friday, it was subsequently revised. Our agenda is subject to change up until the moment of our meeting. There is no law saying that we have to not include something or cannot eliminate something that's on this agenda. So the fact that it was added after you picked up the original agenda, I think is irrelevant.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Thank you. So first, I want to emphasize that as liaison, I do believe that I have information relative to the communication or the avenue of communication between the Water and Sewer Commission and the Board of Selectmen, that I do believe would likely affect adversely the reputation of a person that is not on this board. So I would, you know, I would urge this board to consider passing that motion. Further, I'd like to ask, I believe Mr. Smith handled the formation of the agenda. Would you be willing to give us some clarity, Mr. Smith, on how the agenda was formed, in particular, the item relative to the citizen inquiry, water and sewer?
Sure. Go ahead, Lee.
I was just saying, she's got two motions out here to deal with, plus two inquiries. I mean, she's got to handle the motions.
Charlie, if I have misstated anything, I trust that you'll let me know.
No, you're right, you know, by law, you don't have to have an agenda.
Exactly.
You know, and the Chair controls the agenda.
Right.
I work with the Chair, and that's what happened. I had printed it out, because I was leaving early that day. Before I left, David Toth dropped off the citizen inquiry form. I said, you're going to have to talk to the Chair. And the Chair sent me a message and said, put it on the agenda.
And I would like to remind Selectmen Shibilingham that at our last meeting, you suggested that we have concerned citizens as a standing agenda item, and we voted it down. I said, we will deal with them on a as-needed basis.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
The Water and Sewer Commission is an elected body, not a citizen.
Correct.
The citizen that wrote it is a citizen, and he said he had the approval of his board.
He was working under the approval of an elected body, the Water and Sewer Commission.
And that shouldn't matter, it's still a concern by a citizen of this town. I don't think the fact that he is a commissioner under these circumstances eliminates that ability for him to, him and the board members, to submit an inquiry.
And Madam Chair, you don't believe that your relationship with the commissioner is tending to compromise your objectivity in this matter?
Absolutely not. As I said very clearly, we have nothing to gain from this, not one thing. And this is a valuable town asset, for which we both have responsibility. It is my duty as a Selectman to ensure that our assets and our utilities are protected and overseen. It is also our responsibility to ensure that we do not damage the town reputation, a town that we supposedly all love. So I see no conflict.
I think the only reputation that's at stake here is wondering how the information got from the meeting to your husband.
I think, Harold, as I stated, there were several people at that meeting.
There was everybody who's sitting here, two department heads, ma'am.
There were several people at that meeting, it was confirmed with several people. And as I said, I've heard it from a number of sources. I believe that Mr. Toth had a long conversation with Charlie Smith conversation with Charlie Smith on this information as well. And I know that Charlie has heard this information as well. In fact, I know for a fact that he personally contacted Rusty Cross after an inquiry by you and others. And so, I think it's perfectly obvious and evident that it comes from multiple sources, and therefore, we have an obligation to deal with this information.
Exactly which of the 14 words you allowed me to get out of my mouth is so damning? Because I counted them. You let me speak 14 words before you chewed my head off after glamoring your husband's excessive awesomeness of 14% of operation facility, and yet, when I come to an issue of a threat, which you did not even let me state what the threat was before hammering at me after saying that you were advised by all ground rules. So exactly which one of those 14 words that you passed on to your husband was so damning?
I will not comment on that comment. I will not do that because I think your comment is highly inappropriate. I felt like I was personally being attacked as somebody with a conflict of interest. And I'm going to suspend this discussion unless there is a majority that wants to not talk about this. You've made some motions about tabling this and taking it back to the liaison. There was a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
Nay.
Casey?
I've seen.
Two to two. There you go.
You abstained.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, we always have the option to discuss it in a public comments at the end. We also have another citizen inquiry, and I suspect...
Wait, that motion went to back to liaison, right?
David, please don't leave. Don't leave.
That motion was to bring it back to the liaison.
No, the motion was to table the discussion, yes, and bring it back to the liaison, as opposed to discussing it tonight, reading the citizen complaint.
And it didn't pass.
Hold up, wait.
You abstained.
Why, let me reiterate here. Why are you going to send it back to liaison? Because the liaison is just going to come right back to the board.
And I'm going to come back, and I'm going to make the, you know, the recommendation that I just made.
The comments are already here.
The comments are here, exactly. I don't know why we need to take it back to the liaison. We have the comments. We have the experts here to address this problem, and I think it ought to be addressed.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
In addition to the issue that's being brought before us by the Commission, what I'm saying is that as the liaison, for me to continue to operate at the best capacity possible as liaison, I'm recommending, I'm requesting that this board hold a meeting as I have previously motioned.
Might I remind you that this liaison position is not an official position? It is something that we suggest it might not be a bad idea to have somebody go and listen and find out what's going on. There's no authority of this liaison. The only two boards where they are official is the Planning Board and the Budget Committee, where they have votes. The other liaisons, I go to the Economic Development Committee. I have no authority. I just come back and tell you what we've discussed. So your liaison position has no authority whatsoever. I think it's the board's decision at this point.
Absolutely.
Yes, and the legal advised you to leave it the way it is at this time?
Excuse me?
Legal has advised you to leave the liaison the way it is at this time after Water and Sewer...
What legal advised us was to not change the liaisons after the request, and we have not changed that. But that doesn't change the fact that that position is not a formal, official position. It is just a courtesy.
Madam Chair, I'm very aware of the position of liaison. What I'm asking, though, however, is that I be able to speak on a matter at a meeting, and I have indicated to you that I, you know, I strongly urge you to hold a non-public. Now, if that's not possible, then I would recommend to the board that you consider disbanding the liaison position for Water and Sewer. So what I'm saying is I'd like to either be heard based on what I have to offer, or to disband, or you can appoint someone new, unfortunately. But I do think the problem will remain if you do appoint someone new.
I respect your wish to have a non-public discussion about something you have to reveal, and hopefully, nothing will be revealed during this public session. If you have additional information in which you feel somebody's reputation, other than one of us, is going to be damaged, then by all means, call a non-public. But at this point, we are in a public session, and there's no individual that I'm aware of whose reputation is going to be damaged.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Duly noted. The only reason that I mentioned it here is because the RSA states that unless such person requests an open meeting. So what I, you know, I wanted to make sure that if there was, and if I did call a non-public session for this reason, that the Commission, the Commissioners were duly notified, so that they were given the option to request an open meeting.
Well, again, you have that right anytime after this meeting. If you have additional information that you want to share with the Commission or with the Select Board, you are free to do so in whatever means works. But I don't see any need at this point to not continue with the information that's being presented to us. And again, I ask the Board, do you want to continue this discussion in public, or do you want to put it off until we have to look at it again?
Point of order, ma'am. The motion's been made.
Could you please restate the motion, then?
I didn't make the motion.
Could you please restate the motion, Teja Singer?
Well, my motion was separate, I believe, than the other motion, which was to table. I can restate my motion, but it sounds that my motion would be more appropriate at the end of the meeting when non-public sessions are considered.
So what is the motion, then? I would like to make a motion that we continue the discussion and consider this concerned citizen report. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Sorry. What was the previous motion? To table the discussion?
I have no idea.
Because that's what I voted for, was abstain, as in the motion did not pass two to two, so we were going to continue discussion, I believe.
So you were, okay.
That's what I was...
So you would prefer to continue the discussion, is that what, okay. So I don't know what the previous motion was.
So change your vote. Change your vote.
You change, just change your vote.
There you go.
If I'm allowed, I guess.
Yes, sure.
Okay.
So, we have three to two who want to continue this discussion. I'm going to read the note. At the meeting of the Board of Selectmen on Monday, June 7, 2017, during a goal-setting exercise, Selectman Harold Lamos said that he believed the septic lagoons and the levels of sodium chloride in the drinking water are liabilities for the town. The Ashland Water and Sewer Department strongly disagrees. We would like to have the public know that the department works directly with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, NHDES, engineering firms, and licensed operators to ensure that our operations meet NHDES and the United States Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, standards. All of our permits are up to date, and we are in 100% compliance with all drinking water and wastewater rules and regulations. With regard to our public drinking water, the Water and Sewer Commissioners would like the public to know that our water is safe to drink. We have documented that fact through testing and have recently published the results in our Consumer Confidence Report, a document that is thoroughly reviewed by NHDES. The report shows that the levels of contaminants such as copper, lead, barium, nitrates, and chlorides are well below the acceptable limits. The level of chloride is 140 milligrams per liter, well below the 250 milligrams per liter guideline. The level of sodium is 74 milligrams per liter, which is above the 20 milligrams per liter suggested EPA guideline for people on sodium-restricted diets. The report recommends that the population should examine their total sodium consumption. The EPA estimates that 10% of a person's salt intake comes from water and the rest from food and other drinks. Regular milk, for example, contains 500 milligrams per liter of sodium, and one cup of tomato sauce contains 1,482 milligrams of sodium. Because of the expense involved in treating their public water supply, the EPA recommends that this population decrease their sodium intake from food sources. While the current levels of sodium and chloride are not a health risk, the department is developing long-term plans to control sodium chloride. Tests conducted over the past 10 years by Emery and Garrett show that the levels of sodium chloride in the aquifer are slowly increasing on average. We believe the major contributing factor is road salt from I-93 on Route 3. Our choices are to build a desalinization plant or move the town's well, both of which are very expensive. Desalinization involves increased operational maintenance and disposal costs, while moving the town's well would reduce the town's water supply and limit economic development. Newer methods of filtration, however, may provide a more viable option in the future. The department is also contemplating undertaking additional studies to further reduce road salt impacts. As for our wastewater treatment facility, the septic lagoons are not a liability. They are an extremely important asset for the town. In 2016, the department generated $425,000 in revenue from incoming septic disposal. This revenue supports critical capital investment in water and sewer infrastructure. In addition, we still have 85% capacity available to accept additional septic and accommodate economic development in our mill area. While lagoons are an older technology, they still provide the best natural method of treating sewage. Most importantly, the septic lagoons may meet all NHDES regulations. We have years of data, test data from century wells that monitor groundwater to demonstrate that contamination levels are below established limits. Based on the most recent data, NHDES renewed the department's groundwater discharge permit in May 2017. NHDES successfully completed their annual inspection of the wastewater treatment facility. We believe Mr. Lamos is concerned that there may be groundwater contamination based on a 1996 DES report that stated the lagoons are unlined and leak 50,000 gallons of water per day. It should be noted here that the lagoons are designed to, quote, "leak" and do not leak as a result of a flaw, damage, or age. The NHDES report, however, does not mention a concern over groundwater contamination resulting from leakage, and the estimated leak rate is no longer valid because the natural conditions of the lagoons have changed in 20 years, most likely leading to decrease in infiltration. Older lagoons like ours were not lined, but were designed as natural filters. There is approximately 30 to 35 feet of pure sand beneath the lagoons that acts as a natural, and it should be filtered to remove contaminants, much like a leach field. As lagoons age, a layer of sludge builds up on the bottom and slows leakage. The department has been working with Nobus Engineering to assess the current condition of the lagoons, determine their remaining useful life, and develop a plan for the future that will likely involve upgrading them with newer technology. Most emphatically stated, our water and sewer systems are an important and valuable asset for the town. We base that assessment on engineering data, our knowledge on the condition of our systems and equipment, and the fact that we have always been in 100% compliance with NHDES rules, regulations, and permitting requirements. In addition, we can document that we provide safe drinking water and that our lagoons meet all NHDES and EPA regulations. We are installing a new septic receiving station to protect the lagoons and extend their useful life. We are actively planning for the future and developing revenue to support needed infrastructure improvements. The Commissioners would gladly come to a public meeting with all of our engineers and operators to address concerns and answer questions regarding our operations. And I believe you have such people now. David, could you please introduce?
Can I speak at this, considering this is about me?
It's not about you. It's about the Water and Sewer Department.
Point of order.
It's about me. I don't think...
It's not, it's not about you, Harold. It is about our water and sewer treatment. It states that we receive the information through your concerns.
Point of order. It does refer to Selectman Lamos. I think it would be fair to allow him a moment to speak on the matter.
Yeah, it would be very fair.
Go ahead.
I would like to state, thank you for such an eloquently prepared report, but that was not what my concern was about. You wasted your resources. You didn't ask me. You went and wasted your time and your resources, and you didn't ask me. My simple statement that I wanted to make before your wife jumped on my throat was that those lagoons were designed in 1967, before we tied into the well at the Avery Well Field. They're designed with enzymes and bacteria to eat, the better affluent term, I think, is what you use, and dissipate into the groundwater. My concern was the 20 years that salt-riddled water had been sitting in there, not how much salt we're drinking, but what that salt is doing to those enzymes and how those enzymes are performing to ensure that your waste and your affluent do not go into the Pemmy. But since you so wholeheartedly tried to throw me under the bus, thank you for your time, sir. Thank you so much for your time and the waste of your resources.
Would you care to address those comments with your experts?
I wouldn't care to address those comments because we're just here responding to comments that were made at a public meeting.
Were you there, sir?
That our, that our resources, our Water and Sewer Resources are a liability to the town. We just wanted the public to know, and we're not throwing Mr. Lamos under the bus. He did make the, I just stated facts. He did make those comments. I said, "We believe your concern was such and such."
Believe is speculation, sir.
That apparently was not true, and I just stated it as a concern, Harold. I'm not charging you with anything. No one on the Commission is charging you with anything. What we are saying is, we are operating our resources...
Never did I state you were not.
I want the public to understand. I'm not addressing you. I want the public to understand this. And we have our engineers here, and we have our plant operator here. I'm not through talking. You can talk when...
Point of order. Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order.
Introducing our engineers. This is Mr. Tony Chinta from Nobus. This is Mr. Mike Science, and this is Rusty Cross, our superintendent. They are here to answer any questions that the Board may have. They may be able to address Mr. Lamos's concerns as well.
Mr. Lamos made some concerns about bacteria in the salt and the effects of that. Can one of you please speak to that issue? If you want to restate your concern, Harold?
My concern was that 20 years of salt from the I-93 corridor could perpetually destroy the enzymes put in that lagoon and that grow into that lagoon to dissipate in the affluent to make sure that that water is cleaner than it, than it shouldn't be, I guess is the term that I would use. That was my concern that I wished to state at that meeting, which I thought could...
Could you say that I'm not quite following?
My concern was, my question was, if the amount of salt that was going in there had any direct and negative effect on the enzymes which grow and reproduce in the lagoons to ensure that the septic is clean through settling and that the salt is not sitting at the bottom of those lagoons, which we've seen from the plants to be asphalt. That's my only concern. My concern is, what do we have as assurance? Has there been any testing done since 1996, when that was switched over to that well?
The drinking water one, or the...
The drinking water, yes. If it comes out of the well, it goes through the septic and ends up in the lagoons. So obviously, the salt would go through the pipes, and any of the salt that's in the toilets that get flushed would end up in the lagoons, correct, sir?
That is correct.
Okay. My concern is, has the salt damaged the lagoons which sits on town property?
I can't say that it has, but I could say that the concentrations are probably small enough since they're at a concentration that's still allowable for drinking, that it would not have that type of negative effect.
Okay, that would have been a lot easier dealing with the liaison. Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions for our guests or concerns? I will open this to the public as well because, you know, it's your town too, and we do have some people here could answer questions.
Well, I don't have any questions about any details about the actual lagoons or whatever. But my understanding, having run through them in businesses and in the town in the past, is that a SWAT is supposed to look at, it stands for your strengths, your threats, your opportunities, and your weaknesses.
Weaknesses, yep.
And any town who doesn't find enough threats and weaknesses, even if it's the financial part of what they have to achieve, is not looking at what you have to look at to be successful. So to even, and it's supposed to be a...
Non-biased.
A setup where everybody is allowed to put their input in, unless, remember the Shorette was the same way. Anybody who was willing to come and say what they loved and hated about this town, what they felt was an opportunity or a threat, was all on the list.
Absolutely.
That you look at what threats and weaknesses become opportunities and strengths. And I think it was rather premature to get really excited about being very defensive about even the mention of something that...
Well, if it hadn't come from multiple sources, I wouldn't have been excited and nothing...
Everything in downtown's...
I know. And what we have said, Susan, is that we are not, we are trying to dispel the rumors. And I have said multiple times, if you have questions, if you have concerns, go to the source. And at the time Harold stated that, I said to him in that meeting, "Go to Water and Sewer." And he has not taken me up on that. We had a discussion about salt, multiple discussions about salt, and I invited him to join me at a Water and Sewer meeting so we can discuss the concerns in the open, and that has not happened. I'm just trying to ensure that that information, which is now spread around town, doesn't damage further our reputation. And I'm concerned that it has. You know, when he's, when I hear comments about, "I understand you have E. coli leaking into the Pemmy," that concerns me because that's just not true.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I will let you know that Selectman Lamos is not alone in the concerns. It is illuminating to hear, you know, further information. However, having attended many of the Water and Sewer Commission meetings, I had similar questions and concerns, and I think that the Commission is also aware of the salination issue, and they are working on it. So I don't really know why, you know, it was kind of brought up as if Mr. Lamos highlighted it. I would recommend that the Water and Sewer Commission in the future, when they have a public statement to make, that they do it in a meeting of their public body, perhaps with the meeting recorded. That way, you can, you know, make sure, ensure that everything that you have to say is announced as you would like it to be heard to the public. Thank you.
Are there any further comments?
I would say that we came here because comments were made in a public meeting, and as Susan said, everybody should get the opportunity to come and talk about strengths and weaknesses. So we are taking, we are saying that we consider the water and the sewer systems in our town an asset, not a weakness. And we have stated why they are so. And that's all we have done.
Yes, yes.
I never stated it to be a weakness. I said that it could be a future threat. I never claimed it was a liability, sir.
Well, threat, weaknesses.
Future threat is something on the imminent horizon that we all have to think about. Everything is designed to fail. It's only a timeframe until it does. So therefore, I think it would be advantageous next time around to maybe contact your liaison instead of closing the door and going to non-public when you should be speaking to him.
What? I don't know what you're talking about, but we have made, we have made the point that we want, we want to make here. And we will make that same point at our own meeting, but we needed to address the Board to express our concerns directly.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, one final thing, if I may. I just want to express my disappointment that I feel that one of the Water and Sewer Commissioners attempted to exert undue influence on a member of the Board through how he communicated. So I just want to make note of that and, you know, thank you.
So noted. Okay, anything else? I want to thank our Nobus Engineers for coming tonight, and appreciate your work and the Commissioners, and please keep us posted.
I'd like the Board to hear it, yes.
Yes, certainly. Okay, now we have another citizen inquiry. And this one came in today. And I would like to read it. Although there is now an allowed public comment period at the end of a meeting, to immediately comment on the proceedings can lead to an emotional or uninformed reaction. immediately comment on the proceedings can lead to an emotional or uninformed reaction rather than a response based upon reflection. So I would like to submit a comment on the agenda item for June 5th, the appointment of the LRPC Commissioner. Selectman Schivilingham began a question of the candidate's suitability by citing RSA 3645 and then listing qualifications as though they were referenced, they were in the referenced RSA as he worded them. Rather, they were based on his personal interpretation of what the viewpoint of a Commissioner should be. There is no delineated job description. The nominee, Margene Badger, has shown the professional skills needed in working in the planning field. She has displayed a commitment to complete the tasks she has pledged to do, an ability to research and write well, a skill of actively listening to produce both excellent notes and well-formulated questions, and a patient and respectful manner in dealing with other people. She's also served this town on other boards and committees with the same dedication and skills. To vote nay rather strongly, to approve this qualified volunteer appeared disrespectful and insulting and not done considering the actual role of a Commissioner. Or possibly, the vote was based on a personal opinion of the individual and not on her proven ability to perform in that role. Further, and my specific point here, a municipality cannot function to its required level of serving its citizens without the committed efforts of volunteers. A struggle in this town is to engage enough people to fill necessary roles. This kind of treatment shown by anyone to any person who comes forth to offer time, skills, resources, and knowledge is detrimental to the town and must not be tolerated. A paper certificate does not convey respect and appreciation to volunteers. The treatment they receive does. Thank you, Susan McLeod.
Thank you.
Are there any comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll make a simple comment about this. I believe that this statement is filled with inaccurate assumptions and conclusions, which I believe will not stand when reviewed closely. I stand by the integrity of my motivation, my preparation, and my vote. Thank you.
Can you explain your vote?
I believe that I explained it at the meeting, so at the time...
You asked.
Am I obligated to explain to you my vote?
Well, I'm just concerned that you had, you know, spoken about things that this candidate should do, and then when we pointed out all the things that qualify this candidate, you voted no. So I think that's where the concern was from the public, that you voted no on a candidate that seemed highly qualified. I'm just curious.
I will remind you that the candidate was appointed by a majority of the board, so I don't see any, you know, reason to take up more of the public's time or the board's.
Well, I just, I think the comment was just to remind people that, you know, we are a town and we should all work together, and I think it's just a reminder that we need to look for the positive instead of all the negative.
And respect our volunteers.
And respect our volunteers, which is why we want to have that Volunteer Day. And I know we have a lot of very hard-working, dedicated people who receive no recognition. If you follow Facebook, please look at what I just posted about Joe Mizony and the recycle program. He's just done an amazing job, and, you know, we need to respect what people do. That's my point.
And thank you, Margene.
Thank you, Margene. Yes.
Madam Chair, I'll add one thing, which I think is helpful here. There is an assumption, there is a jump to a conclusion that I do not respect what Margene Badger has done or currently does for the town or other volunteers. That's an inaccurate assumption or conclusion, so I will just say that, and I'll comment further. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we've already done the no means no. Review of sealed minutes?
Yes. Selectman Schivilingham and I, he added to curiosity, I guess, your, the rules and procedures of what to do with sealed minutes.
I think we're supposed to do it once a year.
That was what I understood, but I'm not sure we ever have.
We're supposed to sit down and open them in a non-public and review them together once a year.
That's exactly what you...
And specifically, that was my question, was when, as a board, are we going to sit and review the sealed minutes? Do we want to make a time?
We should make a time and do it in a non-public session, obviously.
I recall we did that two weeks after election in 2016.
Okay. I don't recall that.
So you've already gone through all of these?
No, he's saying last year.
He said last year. I don't think I was there. I did not take part in that.
All the ones prior to 2016?
No, that was the last one that I was involved with. We had, I believe, eight or nine from the concurrent meetings that we went over.
Okay, because there's over 90.
Yeah, I know. A lot of them are back to the 70s and 80s.
Then why are we still reviewing them, the year of 2016?
No, we didn't review them. We reviewed the ones from the year before.
Oh, just the year before?
Just the year before.
All right, then we need to do that. I would recommend we find another time to do it rather than one of our meetings because I think it'll take some time.
Yeah.
So maybe, Charlie, you could send out a message and look for availability either. I know it's hard mornings for Casey, but we could do it some evening when there's not another meeting.
And maybe we should do two years instead of one.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay. So you could do that.
So I'll go with something. This is a process and procedure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair, so there are more sealed minutes back from the 70s and 80s?
I have no idea.
I think so.
So when are those going? By whom are they...
Pass boards.
Pass boards.
Pass boards reviewed them.
Well, shouldn't some, you know, some board take responsibility, perhaps us, in reviewing those and possibly unsealing them?
Yeah.
Wendy, did Patty seem to think to you about that? I was out at the conference last week.
Yeah, if you could find out what the procedure is.
Yeah, if you could find out if there's a statute of limitations. Maybe find out if there's a statute of limitations on the dates on them.
Yeah.
Like, there could be something, if they're that old, that they just aren't effective anyway.
Yeah. Yes, so of those, I don't know, 80 of them could have been already reviewed.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Well, they're supposed to be written on the envelope whether they were reviewed or not and signed by the board. So there could be some in there that are signed and were reviewed.
It's possible.
We don't know.
Yeah, just take a look and figure out what needs to be done, Charlie.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll deal with it. Okay, 4th of July. Harold, do you have comments on your meeting?
Yep. At our last meeting, we had 24 volunteers show up.
24?
Yes.
Awesome. Fantastic.
24 showed up. We discussed the needs for people to park. We have a good amount of people who want to volunteer to park. The church came forth to volunteer some people also in regards to cooking food, whereas Mr. Alex Ray will not have his tent down there this year.
Okay.
And they're going to set up tentatively under the porch of the Booster Club.
Okay.
And we also discussed cleanups the next morning. We have three or four crews established for cleanups both before and after the parade.
Yeah.
We have some young girls from up in Plymouth which will be down around 9 o'clock. There'll be six of them cleaning up here at the school.
Okay.
And we'll have another group down at the park around 6:00 a.m.
Okay.
And we have people at the parade to help too.
Yep, people at the parade. I volunteered myself. Last year, I judged at the parade, and I told them that if I was a judge again, that I would volunteer to line the people up. So we're trying to get people to do two things at the same time and multitask a little bit.
Well, that's really good news.
Harold and I both volunteered.
Wonderful.
To help at the parade, and also, we do need to establish who's... We also volunteered to judge if that's...
That's up to the board.
That's up to the board.
I'm...
I think we need three.
I think we need three. We need three.
We have three.
So you have two, and then so I'll be the third one?
Sure.
It's fine.
It's fine.
Okay. Excellent. Well, that's really good news.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's great news, which means that if, when we have a meeting in August, the end of August, to review everything that happened this year, that there is a definite possibility that we will be able to carry on fireworks next year.
Oh, I hope so. That's great. Fantastic.
Because of this turnout.
That's wonderful.
Yes, yes, definitely. Just to remind the citizens that it is the boots-on-ground, per se, is what we're short on.
Yeah.
And that they have really come forward this year. Hopefully, everything will come to fruition, and we will have a great spectacle next year.
Excellent. Excellent news. Okay, our next meeting is July 5th?
No. I'm asking if you want it.
Oh, because the 4th is on a Monday.
Yeah.
I think it should be the 5th. And any thoughts?
It's fine with me.
Yes, Tony?
The 5th is the rain date for the fireworks.
Yeah.
Oh.
Probably the 10th.
The 10th?
Recommend the 10th.
Okay.
And then we'll be on course till the 1st and 3rd of every month.
Is that okay with everyone, if we move it to the 10th?
Sure.
Okay. Yep, works for me. All right, any liaison reports?
I have one from the Heritage Commission.
Okay.
We met our main, our main subject of discussion, point of discussion was about doing a barn survey in town. This was started by Frank Stevens, a resident who attended a New Hampshire Preservation Alliance meeting last year. In several towns around here, right now Center Harbor is doing one, and it's to document all the old agricultural barns in town, and it doesn't have anything to do with increasing the taxes. That's what we want to make sure that people know. It just has to do with keeping an inventory of our buildings and having them noted with the Preservation Alliance on their condition to make sure that we have, that we're upkeeping our barns. It's strictly for historical purposes in our town and to note. And there are also barns connected to the house. We're going to have a couple of subcategories of barns that were made into houses and Ls and other outbuildings, too.
Will there be a publication of that once it's completed?
Yes.
Okay.
And we also discussed, because we have no GIS mapping, how we're going to go about what maps we're going to use, and there were a couple of different opinions, and one of